March 12. And your name is what? Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 3018 and the governor's orders imposing limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted with remote participation. We do have in-person attendance. Every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And I'm going to identify who's in the room and then who is called in to be a student. Okay? So in the room, we have the full Board of Board of Selectmen. I'm John Duval on the chair. Christine Hoyt, to my right, is the vice chair. We have Howard Rosenberg, to my left, Joe Novak, to my right, and Rick Blanchard. Also, we have Jay Gray, Town Administrator, and St. John, Attorney at St. John, Town Counsel, and Death on Left Admin to the Town Administrator. Also, in the audience, we have Conservation Commission Chair Jim Fasson, who is also a Parks Commission member. We have Parks Commission Member Jake Schutz. We have Adams Forest Wardens Chief Dick Kleiner. And I believe that's it. All right? Okay, those that have called in, I have Steve Molito, Mark Blaisdell, who is our Code Enforcement Officer, Michelle DeRose, who works DBD, correct? Scott Tolemak. Joyce Brewer. Haley Mesmore, a town clerk. And Kayla Farre. Did I cover everyone that's called in?
No, we got a few others. We have Jack Arino from I Berkshires with us tonight. We have Carol Cuscinetti with us tonight, Natasha Lordeau from Conservation Commission. We have Kyle Richardson, one of the applicants for Board of Commission spot. We're pulling footage for Northern Berkshire Community Television. And I think that's it. We have a total of, I believe, thirteen participants.
Okay, that's great. All right, all that administrative stuff all the way to get things going. First item is, if you will, please stand for some of the parties.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, smoothly with the Zoom, we'll see if we can put.
It actually felt really good to do that in person.
Yes.
It's our first meeting back, the full board, in a long time, so we're excited to be back. Okay. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from May 12, 2021, Board of Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion to leave. The reading of the minutes and approval was submitted for Wednesday, May 12, 2021.
We have a motion by Christine, we got a second. Second. Second by Howard, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One of the sections.
We have one of the sections ready. All right. Full business. Review and appoint.
Public comment.
Oh, yeah, sorry, we missed that.
I know Haley's ready.
Okay, public comment. Haley?
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm here tonight not as town clerk, but as a representative of the former Adams Events Planning Committee. A few of us got together a couple of weeks ago and thought it might be a good idea, since we're heading out of this pandemic, to put on four concerts this summer and four movies this summer. So I'm just here this evening just to give you a little heads up of what we're planning on doing, to see if you have any questions, because in your next meeting in a couple of weeks, you'll have before you approvals for the use of the Visitor Center Lawn for concerts and the Town Hall Lawn for some movies. And the other popular event that we weren't able to do last year was the annual tag sale. So we'd like to bring that back again this year in the month of August, to have that happen again. So I'm wondering if anybody has any questions, otherwise I'll continue.
Well, I think that's the test of news. I know you and a few others in the board group put on those events for many, many years. Very appreciative, and for those of you to get back together again is awesome. So thank you and look forward to discussing this further at a future meeting. Any comments from the board? Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other public comment? Anyone would like to discuss any item that's not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, now. Out of our own business, review and appointment of Board of Health applicant. Now, at our last meeting, we had this on the agenda, and we had a very good discussion in regards to Joyce Brewer, being appointed to the Board of Health. And we're very pleased that she applied and is willing to give her time with the Town of Adams. Due to a technical Zoom-type issue, you know, it happens to almost everyone at some point. We need to do this again. So this evening, the Board will be, the Board of Selectmen, last time we had the Board of Health also together. But this evening, the Board of Selectmen will make a decision to appoint Joyce to the Board of Health. We have one vacancy. And then, after tonight's meeting, the Board of Health, after their first meeting after this one, will also have on their agenda to appoint Joyce to the Board of Health, which will be the final step. So Joyce, I apologize to you, you have to call in two meetings in a row. But technology, the way things go. So we have on the table, board discussion.
Can I, to open the discussion, I'll make the motion that the Board appoint Joyce Brewer to the position of Board of Health member.
Okay, we have a motion from Brewer.
I will second that.
Second by Christine.
And just wondering if we need to clarify that it expires with the town election in May of 2022. Your turn.
Oh, so.
I will second the amended motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Again, we had a really good discussion two weeks ago. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Before we do, does anybody have any kind of, to me? Any, does anybody have any, uh, opinion, so to speak? Otherwise, why are we doing this?
Oh, and as I stated that when we posted the meeting, or two weeks ago, in the Zoom, you get that Zoom meeting.
Right.
To the agenda, and it's, right, and the meeting started, the meeting indicated, so people will know, it indicated a 6:30 start, but it was a 6 o'clock meeting. So anyone in the public who wanted to call in to provide input, whatever that may be, did not have that opportunity.
And that's what we're looking for. Does anybody have any input?
Okay, sure. Okay, so we're all off on the vote, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone in the audience or on Zoom have any input, comment in regards to this appointment of Joyce Brewer to the Board of Health? Okay?
Good, great, good.
All right. Anybody else said?
I think you're all set now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, we've had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None, unanimous decision. Yeah, thank you, Joyce.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joyce. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, now we're into new business. On the agenda, BA is review and appointment of Parks Commission applicants. We had three Parks Commission applicants. We currently only have two members of the Parks Commission. They do not have a forum. So they cannot meet. And we put out a few weeks ago, the Board had requested anyone who was interested in filling these three seats to contact the Town Hall, pull out a form, and the Board would review them and have them, the names identified in a future agenda, which is the same. Since the Parks Commission does not have a forum, we have the two members here, which I stated. I'm not going to request that they go into, call their meeting to order because of that reason, but the Board will make the decision with the there, if what's included, the members who have applied for those three positions. So the Board will make the appointment of these three individuals, or two, one, wherever it may be. And then we'll move forward, then you guys can call it, then you can have your first meeting. Okay, so we did, again, we had three applicants. First was Paul Newicki, and I don't believe Paul's called in.
As we had.
Scott Tolemak?
Scott's with us.
Oh, Scott, and Scott's with us, and Kayla's with us. Kayla, Kayla Farre.
Yes.
Okay. So what I'd like to do first is to ask, I'll start with Kayla first, if you don't mind, to provide the Board of Selectmen and the two members of the Parks Commission, maybe some background and maybe the reasoning of why you would like to be a member of Parks Commission.
Yes, absolutely. You know, this is actually, to be quite frank, something that my mom pointed out to me. I think she read about it in the Berkshire Eagle and said that Adams was looking for members to join. And I actually bought my house here two years ago. I, so I've been a resident homeowner of Adams for two years now, and I adore the town. And I have always wanted to give back in some way, shape or form. And I thought that this would be a good opportunity for me to give something to the town that I love so much and hopefully have some input on some fresh ideas. You know, I honestly have no experience in this field, but my entire life, I've always aspired to do the best I can at whatever it is. You know, I went from being a skincare esthetician to being a pre-construction estimator, and I'm excelling in my field and I'm moving into project management. So I know that it is something, you know, with some time and some experience, it will only be something that I will put my best foot forward and do what is right for the town. As I said in my letter of interest, if this is not something that I end up being chosen for, I am only going to be happy that there are other people in this town that are as excited about giving back to this town as I am.
Thank you. How about Scott, any inputs?
Hi there. So my fiance and I just relocated to this part of the country in October last year from Notre Dame, Indiana. We moved here for work and, you know, with this whole pandemic thing, we kind of took a step back in our lives and realized, you know, it's not a lot of fun when it's all work and no play. So this job has allowed me to have some time off, and with that can come time to do some things with the town and for the town. And I thought this would be a great opportunity for us. I've worked in college campuses, you know, for the past 20 years, in food service, but working hand in hand with events and grounds folks. So I think that would kind of help along with this opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, Paul has not called in as.
Correct.
Okay, if someone here on the board, I'd like to ask the members of the current members, the two members of the Parks Commission, if they have any input in regards to the three members that have applied. Okay, can you state your name?
Jake Schutz and you're who?
Jim.
Jim, Jim.
Jim Fasson.
So I had the, I was able to review the three letters. I'm excited to have Paul back with us. And it looks like both Kayla and Scott bring their own sets of talents and energy. So I'm excited to have all three of you.
I'd like to, I'd like to have one of them not get it, so that he can come out for the Conservation Commission. Because I'm recruiting in the Conservation Commission. But quite frankly, these people represent what we see is Adams. The new blood replacing the old blood. Joe Novak asked me, how come everybody's resigning? Surely they've had enough. It's time for the new people to take over, and that's us. Wow, may not go there in the long run. Nothing.
Do you have any questions for us?
If you don't mind saying, then I'll ask the Board if they have any questions. Anyone from the Board who would like to ask any questions or to the three, two individuals who have called in this evening? Joe, are you there?
Hi, no, I don't have any comment other than, thank you very much for putting your name into the ring. And without people like yourself who want to come forward to volunteer and give back to the community, town business comes to a standstill without people like you. So thanks once again, and I know a few of you mentioned, well, I don't know if I have the background, but everything has a learning curve to it, and I'm sure that you'll do just fine. And I just want to thank you once again.
I'd like to point out that Jake, as a member, is a major in the Army Reserve and spent how many weeks down in DC?
Couple.
He can't say. I mean, a couple of weeks down in DC with the Army Reserve of Massachusetts. So he truly has got background and responsibility to make decisions.
I agree, thank you, Jake.
There you go, yeah.
Thank you, Jake, for your service. We're all very proud of you, representing our community, doing a fantastic job. Christine, any comments or questions?
I'll make a comment, and I thought that your words at the Memorial Day celebration in Cheshire were well thought out and well stated, and thank you for your service, Jake. I have an administrative question, so it's probably for the town clerk who's on the call, but might be good information for the two of you to know as well. So Haley, if you don't mind. So the appointments that we would make tonight would be through the town election of May 2022, which then means anybody who wanted to continue on the Parks Commission would then have to run for that seat. Can you tell us what the terms would be at that point? If they're three-year terms, or are they filling out a two-year term or one-year term? Do you happen to know? Sorry, do you want to slide?
Um, I think there's two three-year terms and one two-year term.
Okay. And they would make that decision next May? Or does that decision, like, I'm just trying to figure out the seat that they would then be appointed to. If they're appointed to the seat that's filling out the three-year term, but only with the term until May, how does that work? I'm just trying to figure it out, that's all.
Well, their term would technically would end in May of 2022 anyways, because they would have to run for their seat again. So those terms would be up next year again, therefore making it a two, two-year terms and one, one-year term. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I don't think we had planned to meet tonight, but if, once the new folks are appointed, if they're appointed, I assume we can let them know that Michelle will reach out to them to schedule their next meeting?
Yeah, we'll plan, we'll plan eventually.
Will do.
And just some input, Paul Newicki has been a member of our board already. He just could not fulfill the requirements to get his name on the ballot second, second time around. So that might make your decision of who's going to get which, which term easier.
Okay, thank you. Howard, any questions or comments?
Just thank you very much for volunteering for this position. Thank you.
And Rick? Just two things. One, you can still keep chasing that person, because I believe you could be on more than one board. So we can barely come around. So I think you could be on Parks in the Commission, uh, the Agriculture Commission.
Stand in front of us.
You're still with that person. And the other one is, now it's a five-member board with how many alternates?
None.
None?
It's free five.
Free five? So one more workout.
Okay, we've answered. Rick, you all said?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, so I think we're ready to have a motion. Do I have to do each one individually?
I think we would, right?
We could do so, be on the same side.
I think you're.
Yeah, okay, so we need to have a motion for each individual that the Board would like to nominate to be Parks Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to appoint Kayla Farri to the Parks Commission with the term expiring at the town election of May 2022.
We have a motion from Christine, we have a second. Second by Rick, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, unanimous decision?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Scott Talmack. Scott, is that how you say your last name? Talmack, okay. To the Parks Commission with the term expiring at the next town election in May of 2022.
We have a motion from Christine, we have a second.
All set.
Second by Rick, any discussion? Hearing none, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous decision?
I will go ahead and make a motion to appoint Paul Newicki to the Parks Commission for a term expiring at the next town election in May of 2022.
Motion by Christine, we have a second.
I'll say it.
Second by Rick, any discussion?
Just one thing.
Sure.
This will be the second appointment by this Board? I can say that maybe something should go to him and say, that's it. And I have the same recommendation for a little further down this list here, that, uh, two to max, and then you have the one.
Yeah, I don't think there's any requirement, but the Board can just not appoint, so choose, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous. All three, thank you very much. Oh, and I'm sorry, Haley, can you let them know what the next step is to be sworn in?
Yes, I'll need to contact my office to schedule, I mean, you can, Town Hall's open to the public now, but I would suggest that you call my office just to make sure that I am in the office, to schedule a time to be sworn in. I don't know about your work schedules, but we're typically there between eight and five. And you don't have a Parks Commission meeting planned as of yet, so, but you do need to be sworn in before your next meeting. Okay? You can just call the main number, and my extension is 176.
Okay, Scott, Kayla, anything else?
No. Thank you very.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, so moving down the agenda to B, review and appointment of Conservation Commission applicant, thank you, Jake.
Thanks, Kate.
Review and appointment of Conservation Commission applicant. Now, I know, I think we have another board member, a Conservation Commission member on Zoom. We have Jim, but that, again, is not a forum, right?
Well, we have Natasha.
Oh, you have three. Great, I'm sorry about that.
Just that two.
Awesome, so we have two. So can they, since they don't perform this evening, can they?
They don't, they don't need to, John, you're the appointing authority of the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So you're good, that's right, you're good.
Thank you. All right, I just want to make sure here. All right. So we did have, for the Conservation Commission, we had an applicant, Stephen Molito. He is on the Zoom call to, he's requested to be considered as an appointment for the Conservation Commission. Steve, you know, you're well-known to some of us. Could you please kind of give your background, anything else you'd like to add, your experience in regards to the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, sure, and it's nice to be back here. I would say to start with, I saw the article on I Berkshires a couple of weeks ago, and it really concerned me to see that this could be a board that would be unable to function for lack of enough members. As a longtime resident, I've had to take issues to that board before. And I think every resident ought to have a right to be served and to be well-served. And so then the question becomes, well, why can't someone else do it? And I think we've been probably asking that question ourselves in Adams a lot. And conservation is something that I'm passionate about, because I live on a beautiful piece of land on West Road, and I've really come to love it, I've come to understand it, I've come to see how tenuous it is. At the same time, what I do for work is, I work with manufacturers across the country. And economic development and growth and sales are all things that are very important for quality of life. So I'd like to believe I can bring a balanced perspective to this board, frankly, at a time that's probably pretty important for in the town.
All set, Steve, thank you. Jim, do you have any comments as chair?
It's great to see Steve's application. He lives in a house that has history in it, and the last chairman of the Conservation Commission came from that house. His family, um, his family have, have a lot of background within Adams. And, you know, he's what we, what we need for the Conservation Commission. Because of the pressure that's been put on our Board, we've had some turnovers. People wouldn't resign. People have said it's enough, they've been there for 25 years, they say it's someone else. Well, I've got one comment about Steve Molito. He's your someone else. All right.
It's not you. Are you good?
I'm done.
All right, didn't want to cut you off there.
All right.
Natasha, do you have anything you want to add?
I think it's great to get another person in on the Commission. I'm always willing to learn from everyone that comes in too, because I'm still going to school for the conservation, and having his business perspective will be a good perspective to have in on the Commission.
Great. Great, Board members, do we have any comments or questions? Joe, wait there?
Well, once again, hi, Steve. Thank you for stepping forward. Being on the Conservation Commission is very important, as you mentioned, to get things rolling. One thing about the Conservation Commission, having served for many years on the Board, is that we're under the, you will be under the jurisdiction of Mass General Law. So a lot of decisions that are made concerning wetlands regulations and other things that affect the environment can be questioned by other people. So sound decisions need to be made so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we're uh, as Jim can tell you, with a lawsuit pending. So, once again, uh, I know you have the background and credentials, and I think you'd be a fine addition to the Conservation Commission, and Natasha, I know that you're doing a good job, so I'm very happy to welcome you. I'm sure that there won't be any problem of you getting appointed.
Okay, thank you, Christine, later.
Steve, it's nice to see you back in the mix. You took a, a couple-year hiatus of serving in a role in for the town of Adams, so it was nice to see your application and uh your interest in, in coming back to help.
Howard.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Rick?
Uh, I have nothing to add, that hasn't already been said. Good to see you again, Steve.
You too.
Uh, okay, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion, the board appoints Stephen Malito to the Conservation Commission. Uh, term expiring in May of twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
And a motion by Rick, do we have a second?
I will second.
Second by Christine, any discussion? Now, Jim, the Conservation Commission has seven members, Rick.
Yes, we, we're, we're down, we lost four. So we're, we're down, this, this, we just had a member um um resign, resign. So we're, we're still down four, four members. So we, every time we have to meet, we have to have everybody present to, to be able to meet. The um Cumbun Farms project that was passed took a lot out of everyone. That was, that was a real challenge for us to get that through, and we did. But after it was over, there's a lot of people said, that's enough. It's time for someone else to, to take on it. And so we are going to um anticipate one other person resigning as of October first, in fact. Tom Robinson has indicated that. So we, I, I, I look at Kayla and I, I know she's she's, you gotta get her hands full already, but I'm saying.
Honestly, I was going to chime in and say, is it something where I could do both? Because I am absolutely interested in conservation and.
Well, that would be great.
So.
Mister, Mister Blanchard, thank you for your recommendation. Because, and now we're still, aft- after, if Kayla takes, takes up the the um idea of being a member of our group, we're still down three.
Right.
So we, we can't stop here.
Right, I think we, we have another applicant that has inquired, I think, as, as of today. So we have an additional applicant, we have another individual on the agenda that's looking to be on, on a board, so people are coming out looking to volunteer, so I think we're gonna work our way to get back to that seven uh for you. Um, so Kayla, if that's something you decide to do, then it's the same process.
Okay.
Application. And then we'll uh bring it up in a future, uh, in the near future, or a board select committee.
Kayla, when you come to town hall to be sworn in by the clerk's office, come upstairs to the second floor, look for the town administrator, Jay Green, and just pop, pop in and, and meet Deb and I.
Okay, sure.
We'll, we'll exchange information, I'll give you kind of the lay of land on the boards, commissions, things like that, just Scott, same invitation to, to you as well. Steve, you kind of know the lay of land, but, you know, we, we chat anyway, so uh Scott, I offer the same, come on in, introduce yourself, welcome to Adams. Um, we can give you lay of land with our boards, commissions, et cetera, uh how to participate, we'd love to have you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None, unanimous decision?
Uh, Mister Chairman, could I have, uh, Jim, could you um name the four people that are leaving the board for recognition, because I know that they've uh served uh our community well. So could you please uh name the four to give them some recognition?
Ta- they've already resigned, so.
Yeah.
Tammy Schaefer was a, is a schoolteacher up at Housen Valley, and she, she also runs a restaurant with her, with her brother. She can't do both. She tried, she can't do both. Um. Bishop.
Brian Bishop.
Brian Bishop has, has been with us for fifteen years, and he has inherited his grandson um through no fault of anybody's except. And, and he has his hands full with, with other commitments, so he has resigned. Tom Robinson is been here for twenty-five years. And if you want to know what, what, what's really going on in the law voice, Thomas Sherman, he, he said, I'm, I'm out of here as of October first. And uh I have to respect his ability or his, his freedom to do that, but we'll miss him. Um.
Jay Lipinski?
Dave, Dave is still with us.
Okay, and who is the other member that is exiting?
I think he's been vacant for a place.
Okay, so, so you've had a vacancy that hasn't been filled, so in essence, three uh present uh members of the Conservation Commission are stepping away, right, Anthony? Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, oh, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Kayla, the only reason we're not acting upon an appointment today is you're not on the agenda.
Yes.
On the agenda, so. So we're not happy that you're, are also considering Conservation Commission.
No, unders- present.
Okay, so the vote's been taken, unanimous. Congratulations, Steve. And again, need to be sworn in, work with Haley on that, and uh thank you, Jim. Appreciate your inputs. Alright. Next on the agenda, we have appointment of Adams Housing Authority tenant board member, Adele Hale. So the uh Adams Housing Authority has um delivered a letter, uh, and I will read that for the board. Um, dear Mr. Gival and the board of selectmen, the Adams Housing Authority currently has a tenant board member, Adele Hale, who was appointed by the town of Adams Selectman in twenty twenty for the remainder of the vacant term that expires in May two thousand twenty-one. Since there were no papers taken out for the authority tenant member, the seat will be vacant. Ms. Hale is a tenant of Columbia Valley Housing for the elderly development and has expressed her desire to remain on the board. She has been a wonderful addition and cares about the tenants. The Housing Authority is respectfully requesting the Adams Board of Selectmen to appoint Adele Hale to fill the tenant board member position with a term expiring in twenty twenty-five. I appreciate your time and consideration, Patricia Holby, Executive Director. What is the board's pleasure?
Mister Chairman, I have an administrative question.
Sure.
Uh, the Housing Authority is asking for this appointment to be filled until um twenty twenty-five, would this be considered like all of the others that we could only appoint? Kind of like on council, sorry, um, that we can only appoint until the next town election to fill this?
Well, the, the town election for this position was discussed, and so I would think we would have to go to the next town election, seems to be a situation where there was an appointment. Apparently, not enough signatures were taken out, or, or maybe there wasn't a desire to, to be elected to that position, so that now we're being asked to appoint that person to your position? Uh, I don't think so.
But we can only appoint until the next.
Till the next May.
Okay, so we can't necessarily honor what they're asking for with this letter? I didn't think so either, because we weren't able to do that with any of the other positions that we just appointed. We just wanted to make sure that we were fair across the board and did everything the same way. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry. There was recently some new legislation that was just passed regarding Housing Authority tenant board members. It's been in the works for quite some time, um, probably the ten years, eleven years that I've been town clerk, that they wanted to have a designation of a tenant board member um designated for a period of time to fulfill one of the five um people on the board. So I don't have that information in front of me tonight. So I don't know if you just want to hold off for two weeks on this, and I can get you more information on that um instead of just appointing her to the next election, because I really do think that you can appoint her until May of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I agree that, when I read that twenty twenty-five, that seemed to be too long. Um, so is it, what is the uh board's direction? Do we want to table this until the next meeting um to ensure that Adele Hale, depending on the situation, if it's one year until the next election, or whatever it may be, is willing to serve in any capacity, depending on the length of time?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to uh table until our next uh meeting, so that um Haley can give, disseminate the information um that she's uh willing to appoint.
We have a motion by Joe, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Christine, any discussion? And Ed, have you been looking for that too?
Yeah, I'd like Haley, I'm sure she's gonna send me whatever she has, I'd like to do that too.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous, it's been tabled. Next on the agenda is review and appointment of board commission applicant. Okay, we also did receive a inquiry, uh, but I believe he's filled out the application, um Kyle Richardson. Um, the, he indicated that he was willing to serve and, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, really where he's needed. Um, you know, it's, it's up to the board, um, I'd rather maybe he stop in the CJ and, and, and talk about this year?
That's what I was saying. His probation?
It's great to hear, Kyle. Um, so Kyle, I appreciate your uh input and that you're willing to help where, where needed on, on the on the boards for the town of the Adams, we appreciate that. Um, and after listening to this evening, and is there any board or uh that you may be more interested in, or would you rather come into uh to the town hall? Talk to Jay Green and uh go through all the boards, because we do have deep members. Um, so, yeah, even after tonight, next week, or next meeting, we're going to be appointing more individuals, um. So we're very fortunate, but I was wondering what your thoughts are, would you like to hold off for a few weeks? And review all of the boards we have in town, uh with Jay, and, and uh make a decision that we can take it up at the next meeting? Or what would you like to do? What's your thoughts?
I know my letter is um basically unconventional to the way these things run. What happened was, I saw the article in Berkshire Eagle, and I inquired um through the town clerk's office, I emailed back and forth with Deb, and I got some information as to what some of the boards were, and I actually talked to Mister Rhodes from the Board of Health. And I felt actually a little intimidated because these guys have all these um PhDs, education, this, that, and the next thing, and I'm thinking, well, maybe I don't have what it takes to be on one of these boards, but I'm still willing to help. Um, so I sent my letter in, and I was hoping that, you know, with my background, y'all read it, figure out where I would be a good fit. Listening to Mister Fassel talk, I feel like I could be on the Conservation Commission, I would be a good fit there, um. There's other boards that I don't really know exactly what you need help with, from what I was told, it was the Parks Commission, the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, and um there was one more, I don't remember what it was off the top of my head, that I originally inquired about through Deb. Um, if you want me to come in and speak to Mister Green, I will come in, talk to him some more about that. Or you can, we can do something tonight, really doesn't matter to me, I am willing to help, I want to get my feet wet and get involved. I was gonna do this at a later time, when I got a little bit older, um. But, like I said, the paper needed, says we needed to help, I'm willing to help, I'm willing to step in and, and give this a shot.
Yeah, that's great. Um, the Board of Health is, is uh, we're, we're gonna be full there after tonight's uh board's decision. The Parks Commission is also full now, um, after our recent vote. The Conservation Commission does need members, and we have the zoning board.
I think we have, don't quote me, but I think we have two spots on it. So I, I would say, Kyle, why don't you just reach out to Deb, get on my calendar, come in. Again, I'll give you the lay of the land, let you get a sense of what the commissions and boards do, and we'll find a spot for you. There's definitely home for you somewhere.
Alright, I'll do that, thank you.
And then the board can take action at the next regular scheduled meeting, within a couple of weeks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, should we table that?
I'll make a motion to table the appointment of Kyle Richardson for the next meeting.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Rick, second by Howard, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous.
Great. I'll see you soon, Kyle, thank you.
You're the closest window in the channel, you're gonna close the air conditioner? Thank you, Howard. Alright, next on the agenda, moving down the line, we have a special municipal employee designation, special consultant to community development, Jeanette Kessler. Is Jeanette on the line?
She is not.
Okay. We do though have a letter to the Adams Board of Selectmen from Downers Season, Special Project Coordinator. Um, the Community Development Department has engaged Jeanette Kessler to provide continued consulting services for the implementation of the Town's Relot Glen Project. Miss Kessler has developed the performance, I believe.
Performance.
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 Thank you. For the outdoor, outdoor, yeah, the outdoor center and other components of the Glen Project, helped in determining the economic impacts of the project, and evaluated potential financial resources. To fill this need, and in light of Miss Kessler's re- which is representation of private individuals before the town, the, the department requests the board designate Jeanette Kessler as Special Project Consultant to the Community Development Department, and the position, and the position of Special Project Consultant to the Community Development Department, we just said that, as a special municipal employee consistent with Mass General Laws, Chapter two sixty-eight A, the conflict prevention law. Special municipal employee status can be assigned to certain municipal positions by a vote of the Board of Selectmen. If you are a special municipal employee, you may represent private parties before municipal boards and provided that you have not officially participated in the matter, and the matter is not now and was not within the past year, within your official responsibility, and that's appears to be an excerpt of from Mass General Laws. Then, what is the board's pleasure?
Mister Chairman, as we've done in the past, I'd like to um suggest doing this as two separate motions. Um, the first motion to designate the position of Special Project Consultant to the Community Development. of Special Project Consultant to the Community Development Department as a special municipal employee consistent with Mass General Law, Chapter 268A.
Motion by Christine, do we have a second? I'll second. Second by Rick, any discussion? Ed, you all, you good with this? We've done this before.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous.
And I'll make a second motion to designate Jeanette Kessler as a Special Project Consultant to the Community Development Department.
Motion by Christine, do we have a second?
I'll see.
Second by Rick, any discussion?
Uh, yes, Jay, can you give us a little background, how to fix the budget? This person's.
Sure, it's paid out of, most likely it's paid out of community development, consulting funds, or recycling specific funds that are appropriated by the town here. Jeanette specifically does a lot of community development analysis on Relot Glen, that's been her focus for the town. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous decision. Okay, next on the agenda, we have under F, new business reserve fund transfer request, Forest Wardens Department ATV and trailer replacement for the sum of seventeen thousand dollars. I have a, a input memorandum from our town administrator, Jay Gray. And he did have a workshop last Wednesday, and, and some may have seen the article, I think it was, I purchased, however, it was in the media. However, I will read, and we do have Chief Clyner here in the audience, but I'll read this letter from the town administrator, Gray. In regards to request for reserve fund transfer with Forest Wardens Department, as presented by Forest Wardens Chief Clyner at a regular selectings meeting and workshop, the 1989 Yamaha four-by-four all-terrain vehicle in the Forest Wardens fleet has failed and needs to be retired. Over the past years, efforts were made to repair the vehicle. However, during the most recent call from Mutual Lake to fight the Clarksburg State Forest Fire, the ATV became disabled and stranded personnel and equipment. It was not repairable. This event has made it apparent that the vehicle must be retired, as it can no longer be safely or effectively maintained, and it has far exceeded its normal service life at thirty years of age, of age and obsolete mechanics. The ATV is critical, is a critical piece of the equipment from wildlands firefighting, and is considered essential public safety equipment. Because the new ATV is larger than the current ATV, a new trailer must also be purchased for transportation to and from fire scenes. A reserve fund transfer of seventeen thousand dollars is respectfully requested to purchase the vehicle, functional accessories, trailer, and any additional unforeseen costs. And then the numbers, base vehicle purchase of a 2021 Polaris Ranger 1000 is twelve thousand six hundred dollars. The functional accessories, the witch roof, storage rack, and tool bar, one thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Total vehicle purchase price, thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. The trailer is, has been estimated at two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total cost is sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. And this request was given, or this estimate was provided by Rodney's here at Adams. Jay, is there anything you'd like to add to your memory?
I'd just like to thank Chief Clyner for his patience, along with the Forest Wardens, for replacing equipment in this manner. I'd like to thank the chief for the research that he did. He did research a couple of other pieces of equipment, a Kubota and a couple of others. And Chief Clyner's research determined that this was the best equipment. Since then, actually, some of our folks here in town hall are familiar with this particular model, have endorsed it as well. So we, we think we have a good, a, a good vehicle there to replace this, so. Chief, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
Well, you've all said it all, Jay.
Very well, I know, we've had ample conversations.
All right, thank you, Jay. Anyone from the board have any questions?
I, it's not that I have a question, but I'd like to make it known to the public how much we have in our reserve fund at the present time. About one hundred and thirty, we normally appropriate one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We had a reserve fund transfer over about two months ago, I think, for the Registry of Deeds Accessibility Construction Project that was short by about forty thousand dollars. So the board and the finance committee approved the transfer of that amount to that project, leaving a balance of one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So if we do the math quickly, that's one thirty-five minus seventeen. Also, so everybody does know, at the end of the fiscal year, the balance remaining of the reserve fund goes into another account called the stabilization fund. At the end of the year, doing rough math, we'll have approximately about seven hundred and ten thousand, I believe, in that stabilization account, or a rainy day fund. So that's, that's the math behind how this works.
Ken, Christine, anything? Oh, Rick, oh. Okay, again, we did have a workshop last Wednesday, and we did have a good discussion with Chief Clyner. And Jay is kind of alluding to the process, you know, that this funding has been appropriated in this current fiscal year budget. The line item is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, town, or the Board of Selectmen, and the town finance committee recommended that amount. And the town meeting members have approved it for the current fiscal year. So nothing has to be reduced to be able to pay for this vehicle. It's a fund for unforeseen items, which this, this is one. And then after tonight's vote, if it is in the positive from the Board of Selectmen, the town finance committee, Chairman Tim Burdick, will set up a meeting with his finance committee, and then they will make a recommendation to approve or to disapprove the amount. Uh, Chief Clyner, I, I have a question, and the board can weigh in, is that can we have an opportunity, let's say, when the finance committee sets their meeting, which will be in the next week or two, if you can have a, a time period where the, anyone, anyone from the Board of Selectmen or the finance committee, or even a town meeting member, or anybody interested, can come down to the Forest Wardens Building to take a look at the current ATV vehicle, which is thirty years old, and ask you questions if they have any prior to the finance committee meeting and discussing?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you, so you can work with Jay, and then, and then Jay can work with the boards. And that's the time, and I know we did that for the bumper truck, right? Last time, and it definitely helped me, uh, to see the actual vehicle itself prior to making a decision, so. Appreciate that, we'll, we'll, we'll be reaching out to you. Okay, so what we're doing is we're going to vote to move this on to the finance committee for their decision.
And how do we have a motion, the board approve the reserve fund transfer of the last year, Adams Forest Wardens Department supported ATV and trailer replacement, one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay. Wait, okay, motion by Rick, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Jay, I may have asked this already, does this follow the procurement laws, or we can just, I'll do.
Three quotes.
You get three quotes.
Chief Clyner did that.
Oh, he's already got his three quotes submitted up to you?
Yeah, they're now ready to go to the accounting office, so what, what we do is we take that work, we just document some narrative, a couple of sentences about it, that lives with the invoice. So when our annual audit takes place, we will get to see that, oh, it was over ten thousand dollars, three quotes, similar type of quote. Bidding doesn't have to take place until fifty, thankfully. That's another long bureaucratic process.
Okay, so we're recommending the specific, do we have a specific ATV?
He just needs to agree the.
The amount of seventeen thousand. All right, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Almost done, sweetie, almost done.
All of them. All right, I think that, that completes the new business. All right, next is department reports, Jay.
I'm, I'll be brief tonight, very good news for everybody, Dr. Rose communicated with us this morning. We have no open COVID cases in the town of Adams at this time. So we're in the gray, we have zero open cases, I think that's probably the first time over a year that's been the case. So we hope that that stays in place. As Haley mentioned, public buildings, we had a soft opening, are now open to the public. Council on Aging, Library, and Town Hall are now open to the public. At this time, had to, on the, just the recommendation of the Board of Health, as well as the time that we contemplated open buildings, we still had a few cases, we're just asking visitors, please just simply wear a mask for now, on request, all those signage is up on, on buildings. As the weeks go on, and if our numbers stay low, we'll probably release that request, but as I said before, using the analogy, we had a tie-in on last year, now we're one timing the knock as well. Also, you may have seen in the paper recently, I've noticed there's a lot of people that kind of miss that, but Juneteenth is now recognized as a state holiday. Required by a law to honor that holiday, and Adams will do so on Friday, June eighteenth. I announced that, the staff today, so town buildings, town hall will be closed on that Thursday, other buildings will be closed on, on that Friday. The transfer station will still be open on Saturday, and I believe the treasurer collector will be selling permits at the transfer station on that day, and I believe it's bulky ways days well, so don't let the holiday confuse anybody. We're gonna stay on the normal course, just like we've learned over the past year. Improvise, adapt, work on, we're gonna keep it on that day, so everybody can plan for it. That's really all I have for tonight, thank you.
Okay, Joe, my seat is for the town leaders.
Yes, I just have a few quick questions. How, how are we proceeding with the extension of the Ashwell to Cook White Trail?
It's a good, non a question, still in the design phase. It's, we reapplied to have it included on the tip list for some level of funding. And I believe that North Adams is also doing some work in there for us to, to meet. We've got a pretty well-designed Hudson Hodges Cross Road in, in North Adams. That's as far as our responsibility is gonna go. We still have to work out some cost sharing for that design work with the city of North Adams as well. But it hasn't advanced substantially since, since any time last we spoke about it.
Has there been any personal communication with the burnout and family's?
If there has been, it's been with Donna.
Okay.
I believe most of the property acquisition issues haven't worked out. There's still some issues with National Grid around Zellnight Substation area. They do just have some concerns about how the path will work around their, their property due to overhead wires. I think that's probably at this point the last real piece at least to be designed now. But that information's old, that's not anything.
Yeah, the reason I say it today, there was a gathering for all the children, for St. Stanislaus School, and it was held down at Mill Street grounds. And it's just amazing to see how many people go by on that bike trail. And it's sure one of the key assets for this community to bring to downtown, so I hope that we can continue forging forward and get that to extend it. Certainly would, if that would be the case, it certainly go through some beautiful land. And secondly, this probably is best for you, Jay, since you're involved with Scenic Railroad in some respects. I read where Great Barrington and Stockbridge got the okay to get the tracks fixed down in that area. And I believe, I don't know for sure, but I'm sure that, I guess I am for sure, that there will be continued scenic rides on trains there once the tracks are updated. Is that, no, now?
No, there's been, I'm not as involved as I once was, I still sit on the Board of Directors. There had been a request by Berkshire Scenic to reach out to Mass DOT, have that conversation, and that conversation has not occurred. So at this time, there is no Berkshire Scenic plans to operate down there at all. Berkshire Scenic did inquire with Mass DOT about the opportunity to actually offer manual rail bikes on this stretch of rail length here, and that conversation too has not happened. I do understand through sources that Mass DOT has had some personnel changes, so maybe that's, that's the reason. But there's been no agreement to restore Berkshire Scenic services.
Okay, could you, I'll keep myself in the board of pressures, you find out? Because I want to make sure that our rail, scenic rail stays solvent and continues to prosper. And that's all I have.
We deserve to have a rep come, given update too.
Okay.
Good, Christine.
No, I'm not.
Howard, same question. Rick?
Okay.
Okay. Next is town councils' report.
Thank you, since my last report, following work, I spoke with the district board regarding the rescheduling of the Dupree Dog hearing to June eleventh, and notified all the witnesses of that during day. Today, I was informed by the court of courts that the trial court's administrative office out of Austin is unable to assign a judge for June eleventh, and will attempt to have a judge assigned for Tuesday, June twenty-ninth at nine AM. And as soon as that is confirmed, I'll notify the board and all witnesses. This is probably, as you know, this is about the fifth or sixth continuance of this. Some of the witnesses need to be summoned, and I'm sure they're getting tired of it, I am tired of it. I researched leans on a property that is subject to code enforcement action, and provided my findings to the code enforcement officer. I filed a motion for an injunction with the housing court concerning another code enforcement matter. I responded to a question concerning an open meeting law issue due to incorrect Zoom login information. And I reviewed and responded to a Public Records Act request.
Thank you, any questions for Joe and Secha? Good on that, okay, subcommittee and liaison reports, Joe?
Just quickly, next Tuesday, the Mohawk Trail Women's Partnership Committee is gonna have its annual meeting with all the members of the communities and interest, environmental interest groups that oversee the partnership, and I just wanted to bring that to the public.
All right, thank you, Christine.
Well, I mentioned that the licensing subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen is looking to meet next Wednesday morning at eight thirty. In the morning, we're working on the agenda, and that would be posted in accordance with open meeting law in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Howard.
I'm waiting on the reorganization of the committees, so I can move them to, to see how I can participate.
Okay, I apologize that, I know we had a workshop, agenda item, to bring that to the board for this meeting, but we'll get that out to everyone as soon as possible. I have to collect everybody's notes. Uh, Rick?
I'm looking.
Okay. In regards to the bike trail extension to North Adams, the last I saw on the tip, it was for 2025. And that is the reason for that, is it was pushed, could be stopped for a while. And now we decided to return to that project. And last I saw was 2025 on the tip, but that, that can move, we moved things on the tip in the, in the past. So I'll be continuing to work with the NPO and District One to see if we can, what can be done, work with Donna to get that moved up if possible.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just sort of viewing public, could you tell, tell people what the acronym TIP stands for? Transportation Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Transportation Improved, and Joe's a good question. The, the board and the NPO is also another acronym that I often use, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, which I'm a member of, we have a board, a committee, or the. board, a committee, we're the metropolitan planning organization. And we meet, and our chair is a member of the Department of Transportation. We meet uh, periodically, usually once every six weeks. Um, our main focus is to um, identify federal state funds for highway, road, bicycle, um, all types of those. Um, activities, uh, determining which roads will be done, you know, uh, what order will be done. So we, so each year we do a, we put out a request for all communities, there's certainly two of the communities that, that are members of the VRPC. We uh, request all inputs or some that are still in the works. And the VRPC and the NPO does a recommendation, you know, we list them, prioritize them. And then we move forward and um, some of those make the tip right away, some they'll make it for a year or two, depending on the amount of funds we have. Um, so it's very important, that's how we got the route eight project, which is going on now, is that it went through that process. Um, so it takes time, takes sometimes years for a project of that size to become a reality. Uh, but the NPO board does that and the, and the tip is just a, is a list of all of our projects, a list of all of the county projects that we are monitoring. Bike trails are really exciting, the goals, you know, to connect um, for, you know, from Ma- down to Connecticut, uh, which is a fantastic thing. So, um, yeah, that's what that is. Um, I'll continue to report on that in future meetings, um, so. Then I think that's it for subcommittee and liaison reports. I have a couple of things to show you that for agenda items I want to discuss coming up. Received a couple of emails today, yesterday. One was in regards to the state distributed the, for land that the state owns in the town of Adams, I hope you saw that today. They posted that, they posted what, you know, the amount um, of what they think it should be assessed at and the amount of the town receives. So I, I think it's something that I'd like to have the board at least get an education on, because we really don't talk too much about that until someone comes into us wants to donate their land to the state. And when they do that, there's a tax implication there. And then the uh, states and, you know, when sometimes not, does not provide the amount of taxes we are receiving, so it's a loss sometimes when they.
No, it doesn't. There's a lot of state-owned land in Adams and that figure comes through on our chair issues.
Right.
Those of you watching at home, this the, used to be a cherry colored sheet of paper that the state would write out of what it gives local municipalities. The governor's H-one budget, which comes out in January, had a particular amount, and again, don't quote me, maybe twenty thousand dollars, I think, gave that for us. And then when it went through the House Joint Committee, I believe it went up a little bit, but not, not a lot. But I did see notice come out, a bullet notice from DLS, but I didn't absorb it.
Yeah, it just came out and they, they missed all of the communities and the land, mass and whatever, so. I think it's some good, it's a good education for the board, um.
Might be a good Paul O'Leary or uh, research project, Chief can come present, or Assessor.
Yeah.
Okay, so as far as I go with that, I got, I guess some others, but I'll talk to you about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's it for subcommittee and liaison reports. We're down to announcements and good of the order. Joe?
Uh, just uh, thanks, well, for the good news on the COVID. Um, that's certainly something that's, we've worked on and Jay and others are taking the lead on, so it's good to see that we're in the gray area. I still hope that people that haven't been vaccinated, uh, please do so. The more vaccinated we can get to that quote, herd immunity. And also, it was uh, really good today to see the interest uh, from lay citizens uh, to come forward, step forward and feel free and obligated to uh, sort of on the boards and um, just want to thank everyone who showed interest again. And that's all I have.
Very good. Christine?
I'll continue with the gratitude theme and thank the um, nation for putting together the ceremony on Memorial Day. Um, they, they did so, uh, with not a lot of time, um, and they put together a beautiful ceremony um, to, to recognize um, those who served, um, and died serving. And I also wanted to thank the uh, committee who's put together the veterans banners. Um, it's wonderful at this time of year to look out on our Park Street and see all of those veterans banners up. I just wanted to bring those to yours.
Howard?
I want to thank Haley and the events committee for reconvening. I think this outreach in the community is going to be very, very positive uh, in the town residents' relationship and more community members that can get engaged in this town, the healthier town's going to be. Thanks again, a shout out to the people who are volunteering for the boards.
And Rick? Uh, I have nothing new. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
So who?
Motion by Rick, do we have a second? Second by Howard, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed none, unanimous. This meeting is now ended. That's all I know if I've been a meeting or not. I will concede.